Good afternoon. Welcome to Committee of the Hole for Tuesday, March 19. Kim, can we get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Council President Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any changes to the agenda? No changes? Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And motion, agenda passes. Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
I second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Thank you. Payment off bills, a motion, please.
So move.
I second.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right. Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right. We have Office of Washington State Auditor Engagement Letter for the 2023 audit. And we have Megan Marks. Welcome.
Hi, hello. Megan Marks, Accounting and Reporting Manager for the Finance Department. Before you is the engagement letter that was provided to us by the State Auditor's Office. It is for the annual 2023 audit work that has to be done. They are going to do the financial audit, the single audit, and then accountability audit. The total costs are going to be about $206,000 unless they have a little bit of travel or other expenses that might be a little bit more. And we do need to request an additional $30,000 into our budget to pay for these costs. And available for any questions you might have.
Any questions from Megan?
Go ahead, please.
You said additional $30,000. That's because it gone up since the previous year or there's just buffer or?
That's correct. So last year, we had to make a similar request because we just kind of, you know, forwarded the balance, the budget, because it was a two-year budget. We just need to ask for that additional amount again. As we prepare the '25 and '26, this increase will be included in that '25 and '26 budget.
Okay. Thanks, Megan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'm ready for a motion, please.
Are you gonna do that one?
I move to authorize the mayor and the finance director to sign the engagement letter with the Office of the Washington State Auditor for the 2023 audit. Amend the budget to cover the audit cost and authorize the expenditures accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right. Motion passes. Thank you so much, Megan. And next up, we have Joe Bartlamay with Fourth Quarter 2023 Investment Report. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Bartlamay. I'm the Cash and Investment Officer for the Finance Department. Today, I'll be presenting the fourth quarter financial or investment report. This report was presented to the Investment Advisory Board on February 22nd. So at the end of the fourth quarter 2023, we had cash in the bank earning an earnings credit. That's a earnings credit with our banking contract that helps offset our banking fees. An $11.8 million balance at the end of the quarter. We have our short-term investment pool. That's our very liquid account. We can access that money daily. Earning 5.429% overnight liquidity with a balance of $155.7 million. And we have our long-term portfolio. These are the investments with longer maturities. Earning 2.17% with an average maturity of 744 days. With an investment total of $213.9 million. The total cash and investments at $381.5 million at the end of the year. The pie chart below shows significant portions of the portfolio in our short-term portfolio right now. The very liquid in the red portion, and then the green portion is our U.S. Treasuries. The remainder is cash and other various investment types. Here we have our five-month comparison of total cash and, or, excuse me, of cash and investments by type. This shows cash at the bottom, the green line. The purple is our short-term portfolio with the state investment pool. The orange is the long-term investments. We did increase our portfolio size by $10 million in the fourth quarter. We've been incrementally increasing those long-term investments. So total cash and investments have increased year over year. Next, we have our three-year comparison of total cash and investments. Cash flows are relatively predictable from year to year. You can see in the two prior years, there was a little bit more of a spike in June. And that's because we received the ARPA funds at those times. Overall, increase year over year. Interest earnings over five quarters. On the far right, the fourth quarter is our current interest earnings. A continuous increase quarter over quarter. And that's reflective of the increase in the short-term yields in the market. Next, we have the total cash and investment portfolio. And this is the balances by funds of that total portfolio. This demonstrates the amount allocated to each of the various city funds. And just to note that this could, the allocation could change a little bit as our books are not finalized for the, for the final year, 2023, at this point. They should be relatively close. And next, we have the long-term portfolio only. So this does not include cash in the short-term portfolio. The lower bar chart in the lower left that shows our maturity ladder. And we have about half of our portfolio maturing within the next one to two years. Significant about 27% within the current year and another 25% within the next year. That'll give us a great opportunity to reinvest with the higher yields as our lower earning matured portfolio investments mature. This slide demonstrates policy compliance. So all of our various investment types are well within our city policy. And lastly, we have our portfolio allocation over four quarters. And this just demonstrates our overall allocation by investment type has been pretty consistent year over year. Not much change. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Joe. Any questions? No questions? All right. Thank you so much. Always great to see you and always love hearing all the amazing work you're doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we are gonna go to Economic and Community Development. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. Today, we are gonna have a presentation from Lindsay Walker. It's information only. It's the introduction of Behavioral Health Facilities Code Update Project.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Walker. This item was originally scheduled for workshop today, but since that schedule got real tight, we moved it to Committee of the Hole. Because of this, this presentation's more structured for, excuse me, more detail and more opportunity for discussion. We're here today to discuss behavioral health facilities and the state's goal to transition patients out of large state-run hospitals into smaller facilities to better integrate them into the community consistent with state law known as the Community Behavioral Health Services Act. We will discuss the different types of facilities and their standards to help us consider appropriate locations and zonings for these facilities. This discussion will help us prepare for further evaluation and fine-tuning the potential code amendments later this year. As you remember, last summer, we had to quickly adopt ordinance 4469 in response to the new state law, Senate Bill 5536. This added opioid treatment programs as an essential public facility and updated statutes concerning how local governments could regulate these programs. Essential public facilities are typically difficult to cite and tend to have more noteworthy impacts compared to other local uses. Examples include airports, state education facilities, correctional facilities, group homes, and now opioid treatment programs. Under state law, cities and counties may establish processes and requirements to cite essential public facilities but cannot prohibit them from locating within their jurisdiction. Due to the tight effective deadline, staff had to prioritize the changes necessary to comply with the Senate bill last year. However, we anticipated further discussion would be needed because the nature of behavioral health facilities has evolved. Behavioral Health Services means mental health services, substance use disorder, treatment services, and other co-occurring disorder treatment services. The state is in the process of modernizing and reforming the mental health system and is expediting efforts to support smaller community-based health facilities. A lack of services puts significant strain on the region's hospitals and jails to provide mental health services. King County lost one out of every three residential treatment bed in recent years. And as of July of 2022, people will wait an average of 44 days for mental health residential beds. So if someone's in crisis today, they will be taking up a hospital bed. They're gonna need a caretaker, or they'll be in jail for up to a month and a half before they have any access to treatment. As a recap of what was passed last summer, opioid treatment programs engage in the treatment of opioid use disorder with medications approved by the U.S. FDA for the treatment of opioid use disorder in reversal of opioid overdose, including methadone, and provides a comprehensive range of medical and rehabilitative services. Our code does include a map of where these facilities are allowed within our light and medium industrial zonings. And these facilities do require conditional use permits and has additional materials that are required to be submitted at intake. This is a map of the current allowed zoning locations for opioid treatment programs. In addition to restricting locations, we also require narratives of the proposal and the suitability of the location, inventories of similar facilities, and analysis of the facility's consistency with our comprehensive plan and development regulations, as well as other application material. So why are we here today? We do have a definition and use in our current code that doesn't quite match the full extent of these new emerging residential health facilities. Our land use code contains residential facility with health care, which is defined as a medically-staffed facility intended for the long-term residential care of more than 10 handicapped individuals who, because of age or medical condition, are incapable of independent living. Unfortunately, this would not be inclusive of most behavioral health facilities because it's less intensive use geared towards residents who need assistance with everyday needs and end-of-life care. Behavioral health facilities requires higher staffing ratios with more licensed professionals and assists with a variety of mental health, substance use, and medical needs. They also have varying durations. Since there's an array of different community-based behavioral health facilities, staff decided to categorize them into two different intensities, lower and higher. While each facility has higher staffing and 24-hour monitoring, facilities where residents are free to come and go are considered to lower intensity. Facilities that are more secured, where residents may be civilly committed, are considered to higher intensity. Facilities that also house youth are considered to higher intensity based on the additional measures needed to keep children and youth safe and secure. So staff has proposed two different intensity categories at this time, but changes may be made in the future. And staff felt intensities should be identified to help determine appropriate zonings and permitting conditions. I do want to clarify that we are not considering safe injection sites or changes to our secured transition facilities, which regulates housing for sex offenders. So two of the facilities we hear the most interest in are opioid treatment programs and enhanced services facilities. Staff are particularly interested in receiving policy direction for these two facilities. Opioid treatment programs are outpatient programs that treat opioid use disorder, while enhanced services facilities are residential, medium, and long-term care facilities that provide support and services to persons whom acute inpatient treatment is not medically necessary, but residents are unable to live independently. We also included intensive behavioral health treatment services, which provides specialized treatment for individuals who may be discharged or being diverted from state and local hospitals. For higher-intensity facilities, we have included residential crisis stabilization programs, secure withdrawal facilities, evaluation and treatment facilities, and residential substance use disorder treatment facility. These different facilities provides care ranging from five days up to 180 days, depending on the needs of the individual. While treatment can be voluntary, many residents are civilly committed. And many of these services provide, or many of these facilities provide the services necessary to stabilize and restore the individual into a transition home, back into the community, or to a more long-term setting. The model ordinance was released for the Department of Commerce in June of 2021 with amendments made in April of 2022. It provided many recommendations, including that parking requirements should be based off staffing. The residents typically will not be driving or storing cars on-site, but considerations should be made for visitors if the facility allows it. If transit is accessible, one parking stall per staff member on the largest shift should suffice. These facilities are often one-story to avoid adding an elevator. And these facilities should also include bedrooms, bathing facilities, a commercial kitchen, dining room, offices and counseling space, nurse stations, outdoor recreation area, and laundry facilities. While many long-term facilities require individual bedrooms, some short-term facilities do propose housing two residents in one room. The model ordinance was able to provide suggestions on staffing and sizing for more common facilities, but others have not yet been identified. Many facilities appear to house up to 16 beds or alternatively up to 24 beds. Staffing is provided at a higher ratio for all facilities with enhanced service facilities proposing one staff member for every four residents. And intensive behavioral health facilities proposing a minimum of 17 staff a day up to 27 staff members a day. Most facilities appear to range from 6,000 to 8,000 square feet, but some have been constructed much larger. The goal is for facilities to be more community-based as opposed to institutional. However, there are still impacts we need to consider. The model ordinance was able to provide citing recommendations for jurisdictions to consider. While citing these secure facilities and low-density residential neighborhoods may not be appropriate due to the building size and limited transportation access, they can be compatible with a wide range of zoning districts, including mid- and high-density residential, as well as mixed-use commercial areas with the application of appropriate permit requirements. Citing behavioral health facilities in industrial areas or other highly isolated locations is generally not recommended due to the need for proximity to services and the intent to provide community-based care. We were able to get some feedback from other jurisdictions in Washington. These facilities are still new and emerging. Seattle had been identifying them as institutions and allowing them in multifamily zones with a conditional use permit. Fort Angeles identifies these facilities as medical buildings and has permitted one in a commercial zone. They said they may consider higher-density residential zones with conditional use permits. Pierce County is allowing some of these uses within urban commercial zones and urban mixed-use zones and may consider other zones. Olympia may permit crisis intervention services within residential zones with a conditional use permit. However, none have been approved as of the end of 2023. Their code allows them to be reviewed with lesser requirements with non-residential zones. Ritten said that supportive and transitional housing may be allowed with a conditional use permit, but other behavioral health facilities have not been considered. Taquilla considers these unclassified uses and does not currently have a permitting pathway for them. While we reached out to other jurisdictions, we hadn't received responses from everyone. So the goal of this presentation is to provide a first look into some of the behavioral health facilities that the state is supporting. Staff will schedule future meetings with our land use and planning board, as well as you all, so you can further discuss identifying and defining the individual uses and facilities, appropriate locations, based on land use and zoning, as well as development standards and conditions to mitigate the potential impacts for uses. So there's a regional need for opioid treatment facilities, and Kent wants to be part of that solution. We had a great discussion with land use and planning board and was hoping to further that discussion with you all. What types of areas would make sense to house opioid treatment programs? And what characteristics or services should these areas have?
Do we have questions queued up?
Thank you. No. Councilwoman Troutner has a question.
Thank you so much for this information. So you said you've reached out to other cities to kind of get feedback?
Yes.
Do we have any facilities that we could look at to potentially see where, you know, something would fit within our city and kind of help us use, make that decision based on?
Sure. Like, one of the pictures I provided was in Everett. And that was actually, it's very interesting because it's located within a commercial zone, mixed use. And so the building faces residential area, but it's actually within a commercial zone. And I know Auburn just recently opened a facility. I didn't hear back from them, but I'm hoping to get more information.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on Tony, I think, so, I think she was asking, are there any place in Kent today that maybe we can transition into to fulfill this year? I think that's the question she was getting at.
Sure. Yeah, we don't currently have any facilities.
So, for opioid treatment program, it does, we do have one. And it's along West Valley Highway, and people actually don't even know it's there because it's functioning to the intended purpose of how it was permitted. And so there is a facility there in Kent. And then there are inpatient treatments, but no other traditional outpatient clinics at this point. But we have been receiving a lot of requests for information about them. And so at this point, we have the industrial area. But one of the things that we are worried about is over-concentration in one area. And then also access in comparison to, if there's other parts of the city, that may make sense. And so we also have been, as Lindsay noted, we are working with a lot of service providers to study ones that have good track records of what are conditioning, conditions we could put on permits that would make sense for you, for them, that aren't too onerous to make it impossible for them to operate, but that also a good operator would not blink out and say, yes, we already do this as part of our process. And, and understand, a lot of them will voluntarily offer operating agreements and other things if they're, if they're willing to be good neighbors. And so at their best, they function that way, but there can be bleed-over impacts. And so that's something we're doing on the side of additional research.
And I, yeah, thank you for answering that. I think, you know, when the facility come, I totally believe it's something we should have and maybe take care of people in need. But you always get that question like, not in my neighborhood, right? So not in my place. Whether you're in a commercial zone or even a non-resident. So I think that's something we probably kept putting trying to think through. But we definitely, the communication and all that definitely can play a major role on where we end up with this year. So.
I think it was Tony and then Xandrea for questions. Just kind of a follow-up. What is the timeline for this? Is there a particular time that we need to have this figured out?
I think we have a goal at the end of summer. But this is something that the state started in 2018. So they're just providing more funding and pushing for these community-based healthcare centers.
And you said you've been to land use and planning, or you're going to?
We went last week. And we're, we're gonna continue having more conversations with them, as well as you all, as we kind of have these discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you so much for this presentation, Lindsay. I think that it makes sense to have them near public transportation, also in areas similar to where we allow medical facilities, since these are an extension of those types of facilities. I know in Kirkland, that's what they are looking at as well. That way, people can get all their services in one area.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much. I definitely agree with the services being where medical services are also. And I like the split between the lower and the higher intensity. The facility that we have that you referenced earlier, would that be one that would be considered lower or higher intensity?
For opioid treatment programs, we did classify them as a lower intensity just because it is an outpatient facility.
So right now, we have one opioid, opioid treatment center, and we've had calls and/or contacts about more. Thank you.
Actually, could we go back to the slide with the higher and lower intensities? I had a question on that as well.
Sorry.
It was defining the higher and lower intensities. One more, or two more? One more? Sorry. It'll be up. One more. There we go. Okay. So on this, we're saying that the reason the intensive behavioral health is a lower, I mean, I see intensive and I feel like it should be in the higher one, but you're saying that's because it's outpatient?
Nope. So the only outpatient facility or program would be the opioid treatment program. Enhanced services facilities and intensive behavioral health treatment facilities are facilities that are completely voluntary. And it's just to help support these people, get back in the community. And some of them are a little longer term. While the higher facilities, higher-intensity facilities may focus their health or their treatments on children, or they're civilly committed.
Okay. Right. That helps.
They may also have more significant security concerns than the lower intensity. Where the, the lower intensity are really, the, the inpatient are really more of a care facility as opposed to the other ones. There may be more security concerns and just general community spillover effects.
Okay, great. Tony? Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one more thing. And I think it's- Just one more thing, and I think as we anticipate some of these groups maybe coming to us, asking us to provide these services, what that model would look like? You know, and just my thoughts are kind of agreeing with what my colleague said, more on the West Hill versus the East Hill as far as access to certain things.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd, did you have a question?
Yes, Lindsay, thanks for this presentation. I'm glad that we are looking at this because it's, it's something that we really need, especially in the West Hill area, even though the, the statistics show that overdoses are decreasing in that area, I still think that we should have a patient, I mean, a patient center clinic there because what we're trying, what we need to do is to stop the amount of people that are overdosing, I mean, because one, two, three people overdosing is one, two, three people too many. And so I'm glad you guys are looking at this, this conditional use. And thanks for the presentation, really informative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Councilmember Laramo.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Great, great presentation, we'll have more updates on that. Councilmember Michelle with Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one item tonight, and I have Cindy Robinson here from the Senior Center to talk about the King County Veterans Seniors and Human Services Levy. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, Council. So those of you who don't know me, I'm Cindy Robinson. I am the manager of the Senior Center, and I've worked there for 23 years, the last five years managing it. In 2019, the Kent Senior Center was initially received funding from the Veterans Seniors and Human Service Levy funding. At that time, we were awarded nearly $1.5 million for over the next five years. These funds have been primarily used to support this Kent Senior Activity Center in providing outreach and senior service to the senior population, including many underserved, marginalized, and isolated members of our community. Especially such funding went to fund our full-time outreach coordinator. Her job is to assist individuals in seeking services in the community as well as introducing what we offer to different areas of the community that don't already know about us. We've been able to successfully staff our front desk full-time. We've also been able to take our access to senior center, senior services program, which offsets the cost of the reduced lunch, as well as provides free fitness center passes to those who meet the financial criteria. We've brought in the Expanding Your Mind Education Series, which is designed to promote continued learning on a wide variety of topics, not just your usual fall prevention. We provide a multitude of free physical and mental health opportunities, including Tai Chi as well as individual counseling. We form partnerships with different community cultural organizations to provide services and opportunities to their senior participants, as well as introducing different cultures to our traditional senior participant to bridge the gap that may exist. Such groups that we have partnered with include the Indian American Community Services and Afghan Refugee Service, just to name a couple. We are currently working on expanding those partnerships some more. In 2023, we got specific funding to provide senior transportation to medical, medically necessary appointments, as well as transportation to and from the Senior Center. We've been able to bring in several large outreach special events, including the Wellness Fair, the Food Truck Frenzy, and the Take Home Holiday Meals for the isolated seniors. We've brought in such fun activities, including speed friending, which is like speed dating, but just meeting friends, not dating. And we've also been able to include several capital projects and building improvements during this. These funds are just a few of the ways we've spent them. The original term of the levy ended on December 31st, 2023, and in August of '23, the voters approved the renewal of the levy funding. Last week, we submitted our application for this funding, and it would encompass from mid-2024 through 2026. In the interim, the county has proposed an amendment, the amendment before you today to continue funding through 2024. If we are successful in our application for new funding, this amendment will be canceled, and we will come back to you to ask for approval on the new funding agreement. I'm asking you to amend the budget to authorize the expenditure of the grant funds and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions accepted by the Parks Director and City Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cindy. There are a lot of great things going on at the Senior Center, and this funding is well-used, and we would really appreciate it. Are there any questions for Cindy? Go ahead, Councilmember.
I have to say, good luck.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, I will read the motion. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Cindy. What was the amount for our previous funding? Was it similar?
So the previous, the, they, for 2023, the actual dollar amount was $3,009, $309,007. And that's the exact same amount they proposed for 2024, the interim time.
So they're not increasing?
Not increasing at this time. They do, that's just for the interim. We did, when we went through our proposal for the mid-2024 through 2026, we did propose some increases.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, the way the county is doing it right now is a little confusing. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. I move to authorize the mayor to accept grant funding from King County through the Veterans Seniors and Human Services Levy, amend the budget, authorize expenditure of the grant funds, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much. Back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle, and we're on to Public Works, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item, which is information only on the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program, and David Payne is going to present for us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Councilmembers. Good to see you all again. David Payne, the City Transportation Planner, here with a check-in on the Transportation Improvement Program update. We're midway now through the annual update. As a reminder, from January, each year, we update the Transportation Improvement Program, the six-year near-term program between January and May. So the next time the council will see the draft plan, it will be at the end of April or the very first meeting of May. But we're about to start the outreach and engagement phase for, for the tip update. This is where we look out for, for additional inputs, and we want to come back and give a briefing on what we've heard to add to the tip this year from the first couple of months of stakeholder engagement and outreach. So as a, as a brief reminder for those who may be new to the Transportation Improvement Program update, the, the QR code in the upper right-hand corner is the tip storyboard. So anyone, and we put this on posters, we put it on handout cards, and even on the screen, it works. So used it earlier today to test out the, the presentation. This is a multi-slide presentation on the different projects that are being removed from the tip as completed or added, proposed to be added to the tip. And then there's also a summary slide, which I'll, I'll show next. And then there's an interactive map where you can zoom in and out of, of the map that you see and click on individual projects, dots, lines, and get a little bit more information about what is proposed to, what's in the tip currently and what is proposed to change in the Transportation Improvement Program. This is a tool that we've used for a couple of years now. It seems to be working pretty well, and folks are, it's, it's popular. So the summary for which projects are proposed to be added this year that we're looking for input, input feedback on, there's five this year, and you may think, well, five, that's, that's not very many. And this is a counter-cyclical to our odd years. Our odd years are bigger years, and our even years are somewhat smaller years, and we, we front-load it that way so that we can be ready for grant applications, which tends to stack in the even years. So this year would be a, a somewhat lighter year for the, the Transportation Improvement Program update, but these are the five projects, and I'll, I'll walk through each of those, each of them in, in turn. So the first is a corner reconstruction at the northeast quadrant of Central Avenue and East Smith. It's to reconstruct the intersection to provide a little bit more pedestrian refuge and a little bit more space at that intersection when, when vehicles or larger vehicles in particular are making right turns, that there's a little bit more overlap there than we would like to see. So this is an opportunity to, or we're, we're making the opportunity to, to reconstruct that, that quadrant. The second project is for the Target Zero Action Plan, what we're calling the Phase One Implementation. So you may recall the Local Road Safety Plan presentation by the, by Eric Preston, our traffic engineer, in February, and he identified a couple of projects that we're moving forward with. Well, this year, we're also holding a Target Zero Action Plan, Plan Effort, that's, that's happening in parallel now, that's going to result in a recommended bundle of projects, similar to the Local Road Safety Plan, that we'll, we'll put together and then go out for, for funds for that. So as a placeholder for, for that bundle of projects, we're, we're recommending that it be added to the Transportation Improvement Program now. And what will that entail? Come to the Target Zero Action Plan Projects Meetings and tell us what that should entail. But the, the grant fund sources include projects for low-cost, high-impact safety strategies and projects, and we're working through what that should be now. The QR code also includes a link, a separate page and a link to how to become more involved in that, in that ongoing program for, for those who are interested. Project number three is for 132nd Avenue Southeast, the East North Hill Park Access. There's a little image up there on the, the top right. So that is between, that's between 214th Way and 221st, 221st Place approximately. So that would be adding a left-turn lane and walking path between those two, between those two endpoints. Project number four is, I did it a little bit out of order there. I see that now. Project number four should be the 132nd Street Southwest Overlay. So the, the overlay would be the Millen Overlay, 132nd Street Southwest, between 228th and 240th on the East Hill, approximately there. So that's Millen Overlay and also adding curb for walking paths in that stretch to connect where there are not currently. And the last, a bit, I see Kristen's, Kristen's left the room, but the last is a, we had mentioned previously, a Benson Corridor Land Use and Transportation Plan. This is also a little bit more of an advertisement for that. We have received notice from the PGT Sound Regional Council that they, for award, that, that we have been awarded or recommended to award for that plan, but we don't have the award letter yet. So we're going to come back in just a couple of weeks, once we have that award letter, and we'll be able to, to speak more about that plan. But it's for a coordinated land use and transportation plan for the corridor. It's to include visioning, outreach, and engagement to, to do, to do more for, for that corridor, to reflect and support the transit investment and the existing mix of communities and services and, and commercial and residential that, that's already there. A lot of, a lot of good bones on, on Benson. So those are the five projects, and we'll be back to talk more about Benson Corridor with Kristen Holthoff and I in hopefully just a couple of weeks, once we receive that award letter. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions as we begin the outreach engagement phase for the tip update.
Thank you. Councilmember Laramo.
Yeah, so I have a question on the, the north, the East Hill-North Park Access. Have we done any safety studies? I remain very concerned about the pedestrian crossing at 218th, and I'm concerned that we're moving ahead with any type of project funding before a, a safety study there.
So I see Rob stepping up, so I could step back.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Rob Brown, Public Works Transportation Engineer Manager. We have, so in coordination with Parks, as they were developing the access plan, they hired a traffic consultant to look at traffic volumes, access, parking needs, safety, all those type of things, and the access improvements that they identified in their study are what are included in this project.
Will we be stopping traffic? Will there be, how are we controlling traffic? Because that is the entrance and out, and out way to my neighborhood. I know it well, and there are times when the, the sun's at a certain angle, and it is just not safe at all to be crossing, and so I'm afraid of making any improvements. We're going to encourage crossing at that intersection.
The plan includes a 214th, which is at the north end of, across the creek, and then a 218th near the elementary school.
Right.
Pedestrian-activated flashing beacons.
Okay.
And then walking pass and sidewalk improvements from the elementary school all the way to 216th, and then from 216th to 214th.
Okay.
So you'll be able to get from both of those neighborhoods on the west side of 132nd over to the east side of the road and then into the park.
Okay, and then we will be, okay, there'll be flashing beacons. Okay, I remain concerned, but thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was also about 132nd, but the other project, what were the streets again?
Thank you, yes. It is between 228th and 240th, 228th Place, I believe.
Okay, and we're going to address pedestrian safety, is that what you said?
It will, it will add extruded curb on both sides of the street for, to connect the neighborhoods to the, to the pedestrian network.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Boyd, you're okay? You look like you had, you look like you had a question there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is it for us.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, David. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda. We are adjourned, and we'll see you all here at 5:15 for our workshop. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19.
And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, March 19. And we have two items on our agenda. First item is Greater Kent Historical Society presentation. And we have our Parks Director Julie Perez-Candola and Dylan Hi here. So, welcome. We're excited for you to get started.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council members. As Satwinder mentioned, my name is Dylan Hi. I'm the Executive Director with the Greater Kent Historical Society and Kent Museum. And I wanted to give a status update of what the museum has been working on over the past year. Before I begin, I just want to start with just saying thank you. Thank you to all of you for your ongoing support of the museum and encouraging our community to explore our history. Back in 2021, with your support, we were able to implement a work with a consultant to develop and then begin implementing a strategic plan, which makes the basis of a lot of what I'm going to be talking about today, what we've been working on. I also wanted to say thank you for your ongoing support. It really is the fuel that gives us the capacity to make significant progress on what we've been able to do so far and continue to expand our reach within our community. And also, I just want to say individually, thank you for your participation and your support. I've seen so many of you at events, whether just coming by to stop by to say hi, to offer remarks, to be involved in the organization. It really means a lot and I think it shows a lot of value that this community places on history. And one of the things that I think makes Kent special, which is the way in which all of you show up in support for our community. I also want to quickly say thank you. Thank you to Julie Perez-Candola for your ongoing support in working with the society and developing that relationship. We could not have done what we've been able to do today without your support. I also just want to recognize we have a number of our board members here tonight who are responsible for a lot of the initiative, the planning and implementation of what we've been working on. So, we have Dave Johnson, our Vice President. We have Mike Evans, our Secretary, Michael Johnson, our Treasurer, and Linda Martinez, a board member with us tonight. So, thank you. So, just to take it a step back, we, the Greater Kent Historical Society, we operate the Kent Historical Museum, which is, you see in the photo here, it is the Historic 1908 Brighter House located out on Smith Street. And our mission is to inspire the community to explore and discover their history. We educate and preserve diverse family and kinfolk storylines for future generations. This is really important for us as we're thinking about how we are implementing everything that we do, whether it's through our strategic plan, our programming, our exhibits, and what we would like to do within the community. At the Historic House, we, you know, we maintain public hours for visitors to come by. We maintain a historic collection. We host activities and events. We participate in community events outside the walls of the museum and just continue to look for ways to engage our community and connecting with history. So, really quick with what we had been doing, what's been going on in 2023, just to look at some of the numbers. In total, we engage with, I'll say, almost 1,000 people, probably is above this. I think some of these estimates are conservative, whether that's with events at the museum, with general visitors to the museum, as well as participation and engagement we've had at some of the community events we've been involved with. We had just over 80 members in 2023, which is up from, you know, during the pandemic at one point, we had around 40 members. So, I'm really excited to see our membership continue to grow and see that support from the community for what we're working on. We had, we received just under 15,000 in individual donations and received just shy of 14,000 in grant funds. But we had a number of grant funds pledged as well in 2023, including that 11,900, which is part of a project grant that is ongoing work that's continuing into this year. And we have a small but mighty team. And I think what, one of the things that is, I really want to emphasize is the amount of effort that volunteers and our board has put in this last year. If you look at the kind of fair market value for in-kind service for volunteers, it's just a size of $100,000 of contributed effort. And so, again, when we talk about the work that's going on at the museum, we really could not do it without the support of our community. In 2023, we hosted a range of exhibits and experiences. We worked with Humanities Washington with their Speakers Bureau to bring out B.J. Cummings to talk about her book, The River That Made Seattle, all about the history of the Duamish River watershed. We did a, we had a dedication of the Welcome Figure carved by Mike Evans in April. We hosted our annual Experience Historical Kent Weekend in August. We had great performances from the I Build Bridges team and a range of community partners that participated from throughout the community in that effort. We worked with Christina Erokiyasami of Culture Generation in launching the Taste of Kent Taste of Community tours that we're continuing on with this year. We, we put up, we worked with the Kent Libraries and put up our, we have a pop-up display called Our Kent Stories that highlights voices from within our community. And we did a range of programming related to that, an Open Archives event in September and a storyteller, Margaret Reed McDonald, as well as a writing workshop with Kristin Millar Seung. And finally, we hosted a murder mystery night in October, which we had a lot of fun with. And we're continuing to offer, we're actually offering another one here in April, as well as now can continue to offer it as an opportunity for private events, as another way to engage with history in a fun, unique way. And then, we did offer a number of exhibits as well, both within the museum and outside. We worked to put together some displays in the Second and Meeker window front right there with some of the, some of the materials that we worked on at Kent International Festival. And we also put together an exhibit with the Seattle Thunderbirds and hosted a nice opening where we had most of the team and we had Cool Bird out. So, again, it was a lot of, a lot of fun and another way to bring in an audience that we really hadn't engaged too much with before. And so, you know, as you can see, we're really trying to work on continuing to build partnerships, build relationships within our community, and try out new programs that reach different parts of our, of our audience. As I mentioned, we have been really working to prioritize participation in existing community events, whether that's through being run by the City of Kent, the Lions Club, Kent Downtown Partnerships, et cetera. And here's a few of the events that we participated in this year, and we're continuing to place that as a priority. It's a great way for us to be able to come out and show support for the work that other organizations are doing and build those relationships. So, some of the things that are happening behind the scenes that I really want to highlight. In particular, one of the things that was, showed up in the strategic plan as a high priority for our collections was to conduct a collections inventory, basically to assess the state of what, what types of collections we have within our, within our space. You know, we've been in existence for around 30 years. So, we've, so far, we've inventoried, at least in 2023, that was about 2,500 items. We are now well above 3,000 items in our collections inventory, making really good progress on that. And will really lay the foundation for helping us to continue to build a little bit more of the provenance and the stories that, of the, of the objects, of the history that these objects tell. We worked on developing an interpretive plan for the museum. I'll talk a little bit more in detail about what that looks like and what that means. But it was a really important initiative for us to lay the foundation for what we want to work on in programming and exhibits in the future. We worked with fundraising consultant just to establish some constituent database, work on developing some of the infrastructure for annual appeals and future fundraising. We were able to finish our leaded window project. We had, we had received a series of grants to address the leaded windows, the historic windows in, at the house that were falling into, into, or needed, were in need of repair. So, we were able to finish up with the last 13 windows with a grant, working with Art Class Technologies. And we're super thankful for that work. And then, we, we were able to start a project with funding through Washington State Historical Society. It's called their Diversity in Local History Grant Program. And we have been working in And we have been working in partnership with Mother Africa to work on gathering and sharing the history of African communities here in Kent. We see this really as a seed to start to develop that project and bring that into the community, but, and we'll be, we'll be doing some more public-facing things here in 2024, but I think it was a really big effort and important initiative on our part in 2023. So, with our strategic plan, as I mentioned, we, back in 2023, with your support, we were able to work with Weatherhead Experience Design to develop a six-year strategic plan, which has really been guiding a lot of the work that we've been doing over the past two years. And it's, it's laid out in, with nine different sections of areas to address, everything from personnel to programs, collections, and city relationships. And so, again, this has been really underlying a lot of what we've been focusing on over the past couple of years to really lay a foundation that will allow for continued growth for the, for the organization. Michael Johnson, the chair of our Strategic Plan Committee, developed this dashboard that helps us track and, you know, be accountable to the items in our strategic plan, just so we have a vision for, you know, what are the things that we have made progress on? Where are we making, you know, strategic decisions about what we might reorder or re-change, right, you know, change the order of, but really helping us to really guide and be thoughtful about how we're, we're making progress in all of these areas. So, it's a huge undertaking, and I'm really thankful that Michael's done the work to put this together. We need to go over this quarterly, which helps, again, helps us make some significant progress. Because of that, largely because of that, we were able to complete or are in progress on nearly 95% of the items in the year one and two of our strategic plan, which, which, again, is huge for us in just being able to lay a solid foundation that we can continue to build from. That's the way the strategic plan has been kind of laid out, is laying out some foundational steps that we can continue to build on throughout the years. So, some of the key highlights in administration operations, one of the early stages of the strategic plan really wanted, focused on bringing in an executive director to help advance some of these strategic plan initiatives. So, I was brought in in late 2022. We worked on updating our bylaws to align with some of the evolving needs, both in the museum and priorities that we saw within the strategic plan. We implemented a point-of-sale system for handling both in-person and online transactions for sales and donations. We also implemented a constituent relationship management system, basically, you know, a way that we can make sure that we're, we're working well with our members, with donors, to be able to maximize the, our input and communication with those that are, that are doing so much to support, support the organization. And we just started working late 2023, early 2024 with Grant Prospect Researcher to complement some of the work that we had, we had worked on with our fundraising consultant. In exhibits, again, we, the big, the big thing that we worked on is this interpretive plan to help us be strategic about what kinds of exhibits and programs we're going to focus on. And I already kind of walked through some of the exhibits that we did this last year, and I'll talk a little bit later about some of the plans we have for this coming year. In programming and collections, with our collections, just as I was coming on in 2022, we transitioned to Past Perfect, to a web-based version of Past Perfect. It's a collections management software, basically where we keep all of the information about the items within our collections. The nice thing about the web-based version is that it gives us the capacity, once we, once we have updated some of, a lot of the catalogs, records, that we can share that, that information about our, our collections publicly through our website. And so, it was a really good first step for us, being able to make our collections more accessible. We, as I mentioned, we got the grant for Pursuing a Collections Inventory. And on the programming side, again, you know, in, as well as, you know, continuing to offer a number of the programs or testing out new program formats, we've just been working to kind of integrate an annual planning calendar, not just for programs, but also for a lot of our administrative work, so that we are all kind of swimming in the same, rowing in the same direction. And then, our relationships, you know, again, just the, our ability to continue to meet with, with Julie and other members of Parks Department and other members of the city to strengthen those relationships, find out where we can complement the work that's being done within the city and where we are really fitting, fitting a need within our community. And a big part of that is working on update, updating our lease agreement, which Julie and I have been continuing to work on, which I think is going to be a really important step for us, just to clarify our role, our relationship, so that, again, we can kind of maximize our, the way in which we're, we're complementing the work that the rest of you all are doing within the community. We, we're continuing to stay involved in community events, and we're continuing to look for new ways that we can partner with community organizations to expand the reach of, you know, what we can all do together. We've been doing, we've also been really trying to continue our work in doing surveys and evaluation. A big part of the strategic plan was getting a lot of feedback from our community about what people would like to see at the museum. And so, we've been continuing to work on surveys and evaluations to understand both what are people getting out of their experiences when they come to the museum, when they come to an event, as well as what are some of the things that they're looking for in the future from the museum. And so, I, we've been doing that a number of ways, again, just general visitor feedback when people come to the museum, we have an evaluation form, we have, we do some evaluations at events. And when we were working on this interpretive plan, we did some surveying to just get a better sense of what people are looking for in terms of programming experiences at the museum. From all of that feedback, I've tried to kind of collate, like, what are, what are the things that we know, what are people looking for? And, again, I don't think anything here is too, is a surprise, but I think it's really helpful to kind of put it into words and make it concrete. People are really looking for opportunities that are interactive, social, and fun. They're looking for opportunities for hands-on learning, whether that's workshops or something where, you know, you can really be involved, it's not just a passive experience. They're looking for ways that they can explore their interests, whether that's something that they have a personal connection to, that they're curious about, that they have a passion for, looking for things that are, I say age-appropriate, basically that we have programs that span a range of, of, that are of interest to a variety of ages, whether that's early learners, school-age students, young adults, multi-generational families or groups, that we have a variety of experiences that, that cater to those different audiences. And that we have, that we have events and programs that represent the various cultures of the community. So, that's, that's kind of the what types of programming. In terms of what people are really interested in learning more about, what is the kind of, the content, I guess, that you, people are looking for? They're really, people are really interested in learning about the diversity of the cultural and ethnic groups' experiences here in Kent, so representing a variety of perspectives, voices, and experiences. Some interest in things like industry and technology and innovation that we have seen throughout the history of our city, the early formation of Kent as a, as a city, as well as the growth of the city throughout, throughout its history. You know, a lot of people talking a little bit, you know, wanting to know more about recent Kent history, oftentimes, I think, people think of history as, you know, 50 years ago or more. And I think really, you know, something that I'm passionate about, and I think we're seeing from people, people's responses, that, you know, they want to see a connection today, and, you know, 50 years, you know, you know, it's just as important to see what happened 50 years ago as what happened 10 years ago, as what happened five years ago, and make those connections to what we want to see in the, for the future of our, of our community. People are really, you know, want to know about key people within, within the community, and just getting, again, more rotation of topics around arts, culture, food, that, that we see within our community. What's missing? So, what are the things that people, you know, when they come to visit the museum, which right now is primarily interpreted as a historic house, what are they looking for? I think what we're really seeing is people just want more context, right? More context about the broader history of Kent, beyond just, you know, the history of that, of a house, or of the people that live there. More engagement, so, you know, more that we can do in terms of whether that's text, audio, et cetera, that is engaging for visitors, something that you can respond to or respond with in a group. And, again, a rotation in an opportunity to explore various topics. So, not just one, you know, one-and-done history of Kent, but also an opportunity to do a deeper dive into specific topics. And, again, we get, we always get a range of great ideas, and I think it's encouraging to see that there's lots of opportunities for new areas to explore. So, based off of all of that feedback, we, we developed an interpretive plan, and from that, a vision for a new 21st century Kent Historical Museum. I think, you know, we, we had been having conversations, and we knew that change was coming. I actually think that was a quote from, from our former president, you know, "We knew that change was coming for this organization, and we really wanted to just, you know, find that direction and, and start steering that way." So, but I am always asked the question before we start any big, why, why are we doing this now? Again, I think that we had been hearing from the community, and we had been hearing internally that there was a need for change. And, you know, as a lot of cultural organizations have been experiencing, in particular from the pan, since the pandemic, there's really a need to breathe new, new visibility, new excitement, and relevance to, to these organizations and their, our offerings. And, and I think there is some real excitement to see, see some change. So, we developed this interpretive plan with Mary Lee Mostoff. She is a interpretive planner we worked with through the bulk of 2023. And basically, what we came up with, it's a, a series of about four relatively short guiding documents. But really, it's about establishing for the museum the criteria that we can use to assess the relevance of a project, based on these four questions that you see up here. Basically, why are we doing the project? How's it aligned with our mission? Who is our intended audience? What is the format of the project? And really crucially, the last question, which is how? How are we designing for learning experiences for these intended audiences? The museum field is really, has been shifting, and the 21st century museum model is not focused just about what you're putting up, but it's how you're putting it up, how you are engaging with your visitors, and, and that's what we're really orienting towards. I do think that the important thing is, is that this interpretive plan is not prescriptive, so it's not something that's outlining every single exhibit and program that we want to do. I think it gives us the flexibility to be responsive to what the community needs are for our, for, for our exhibits and programs, the plans for those to evolve over time as we see need shift within the community, or where we receive additional feedback for what people really want to see. But it gives us a really great framework for how we make decisions. So, again, just the why, we, it's, we're always going to come back to our mission, to inspire the community to explore and discover their history. And I think those, those key verbs, to inspire the community to explore and discover, I think is really at the heart of a lot of what we've been focusing on with what we want to do at the museum. Beyond that, we established a series of outcomes that we want people to feel a sense of belonging here in Kent. We want visitors who come to the museum or attend an event to be able to explore a topic that they feel as they have a personal connection to, and that they'll make a connection between what they see in history and their own experiences. And so, I think that's really what we're, what is guiding a lot of what we're, the kinds of experiences we want to create. Our community really is the Greater Kent community. In particular, we're looking at people of all ages who do currently live or have lived in Kent, people, especially people that are new to living in Kent, K through 12 students and staff, and our City of Kent partners, who really are key in helping to work with us to, to share the history of our community. How, how do we want to do this? This is really where we're, we're focusing, on thinking about what are the strategies that we want to employ to make our programs and exhibits engaging. And so, we're looking for experiences that encourage conversation, encourage exploration, making observations about the, what they see around them in their community, making connections to the past, using our imagination to think about a vision for what we would like to see for the future of our community, and personal reflection. And so, those are big and lofty, but what does that actually mean? What does that look like? You know, we can do that in a variety of different ways. It's, it's, it can be, I don't know if I'll say simple, I'll put that in quotes, but simple as asking really good questions within the heart of exhibits to get people, to encourage conversation, to, to get people in dialogue with each other, whether that's in a group or, you know, having interactive questions and experiences where you can see, you know, what others have said, what others have responded to, and you are now put in conversation with the rest of your community about what you'd like to see, what, what our history means to you. We are really working to create an environment where we, where authority is shared with our community. It is not our role as the museum to tell you our history, it is to work with our community in order to, to gather and share that history. And so, I always point to the great example that I think our, our friends and neighbors up at Highline Heritage Museum are doing, to really work collaboratively with their community, to offer programs that are co-developed and for, for their community. And so, that's some of the work that we're, we're working towards. What we'd like to see at this, the new museum in terms of content, some of the themes that we've identified to explore, in particular in the next five years, and to focus on are things like, again, should, mostly should look familiar from what we heard from visitors, but industry and innovation, cultural traditions, food and culinary traditions, the, the diversity of ethnic and racial communities within Kent, environmental change of the city over time, the way that the environment has impacted the lived experiences of, of our community, and that community involvement and activism, you know, what I think, again, as I've been saying, that I think makes this community special, is how much people show up and support and fight for, for a better community for, here in Kent. So, what does that actually mean for our museum? It really means a shift from an interpretation of the museum as a historic house to the museum as a historic, a broader history museum. Based off of these conversations, we put together a preliminary floor, space use plan of basically what we would like to do within the museum. Broad strokes, what this, what this means is utilizing our first floor, which is the floor that is ADA accessible for most of our primary exhibits, and then trying to move more of the administrative offices and spaces up to, onto our second floor. And then utilizing those spaces in our, in that first floor to highlight, again, a broader history of Kent, a focus on a thematic primary exhibit, rotating gallery, community gallery space, and more space for mixed-use space, and more space for mixed use of interactive spaces. For primary exhibits, again, the focus would be more of a thematic history of Kent, based off of those themes that you saw from the interpretive plan. You know, it really gives us an opportunity for us to have a, and I use primary, not permanent exhibit, which because I don't want it to feel like we were going to put something up and then that's it, it won't change. Primary exhibit, thematic primary exhibit gives us an opportunity to install a broader to tell a broader history of Kent, but have subthemes that we can rotate out. So if we have a a space about industry and innovation, you know, we can always rotate out particular, you know, what we're highlighting within that part of the exhibit while maintaining the overarching story and narrative that we have in the broader exhibit. We do want to at least, you know, do some interpretation of the history of the house and in particularly of its residents. I think the the brighter house does have a number of stories of the residents who lived lived there that can really give us a gateway into different periods of Kent's history. And so I think it adds a nice layer that we can we can utilize without devoting the the bulk of our exhibit space to just to that history. And then providing some secondary exhibit spaces, so that would be spaces that we could use for rotating exhibits, you know, if we want to do a specific, a deep dive on a particular topic, or we also having space that we can bring in community-led projects for additional display spaces within the museum. Putting emphasis on multi-use spaces, hands-on spaces, having a library and archives space to for people that are looking to do independent research, and spaces for, again, thinking about reflecting and thinking about the future that that people want to see for our community. And then I just wanted to just mention, too, we are also thinking about the broader, you know, how can we utilize our outdoor space for hands-on interpretation programming, but also, again, for event space and things like that, continuing to utilize the entirety of our of those of that property for for our community. So it's a big, you know, this is a big lift for for our organization. This is looking at least a five-year plan, but we're looking to do this incrementally. So it gives us an opportunity to move room by room, to update exhibit spaces. I think it gives us an opportunity, as we're going, to do some assessment, get some evaluation and feedback as we make a change. What are people drawn to? What do they want to see in other spaces so we can continue to be responsive and reflective of what the what the needs are within the community? We'll have to acquire additional storage space. The big thing for us is increasing our capacity. So we're looking into grants and funding, in particular to look for curator or interpretive specialists that can help lead in some of the planning for these changes. The big thing, the other big thing for us is that it does not represent an irreversible change for the space. We're not planning on, you know, tearing out the wood paneling in the museum, right? We think that's a really important character to the house, but I think it's just for us, it's a way that we can utilize our space most effectively to meet the community needs. And again, for me, it's all about how are we meeting this 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 goal to build a stronger, inspired Kent community? And I think that's really what what we're looking to and why we want to make this change. So I'm really excited about the the possibilities that this mean that this has for our organization. Just to touch on kind of a little bit of what's ahead in 2024, we are looking at utilizing the changing out our rotating gallery space to become that rotating gallery space. We have a student, University of Washington Museology student who's planning out an exhibit based around Kent's response to COVID-19. We are working with Mother Africa to on a launch event in May for our Kent African Communities Project and to continue to build on that those stories and experiences. We're continuing our work with the Taste of Kent Tours with Christina. We have our Experience Historical Kent Weekend, August 9th and 10th, and our Washington, and we're, we have a Washington Humanities Washington Speaker, John Holliday, who's going to be giving a talk later in September. Again, there's a couple of other things in the works, but I just want to give a couple highlights for for what we have coming up in 2024. Other big things on the backend of what we're working on, we're working on logo and rebranding. We're continuing work on updating the lease agreement. I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we are really focusing on the big, big for us doors open funding that just was passed through King County. That will, basically, those funds will be start becoming available in early 2025 and really hoping to leverage that that funding to be able to advance a lot of these initiatives that we've been talking about. And I just want to say thank you again for your time, and I'll happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you, Dylan. Any questions, Councilmember? Michelle?
Thank you, Council President. Dylan, thank you so much for your presentation and to the board members for being here. Dylan, I just want to thank you. You mentioned increasing visibility for the museum, and I think that has really come through this past year. There have been so many different and so many different exhibits and activities that have really interested the public, so I just want to thank you for doing such a good job. And I think the strategic plan has kind of given new life to the historical society. So kudos to everyone involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Boyce?
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, glad to have you on. This career is just you personally. You've been here almost two years now. Just wondering what kind of aha moments that your experience since you've been here and then maybe opportunities you see years down the road, just you personally?
Yeah, I again, I think the what I kind of keep going back to in terms of aha moments is I am continually impressed with the way that this community kind of comes together and just has the, there's a mentality of just, we're going to get it done, right? And I think I saw that, again, that's why I was excited about the Kent's response to COVID-19. I think that's an interesting topic because it might be something that people, you know, might not necessarily know about. It's kind of a little bit behind the scenes, but I think it is really representative of what happens within this community. And I think, to me, that's the opportunities that I see, which I think I I always put partnerships and those relationship building first. I think there's such amazing work that people have been doing. Again, I hope she doesn't mind me calling her out, but but Rishu Sapana with Mother Africa, that just kind of came out of initial conversation. I I went to talk with her about what do you think would be a great opportunity for that we could collaborate on? And, you know, to her credit, it wasn't just the idea. She said, yes, even given the amazing work that Mother Africa does. I mean, I can't imagine the the amount of work that 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 whole organization puts into just having the impact that they do, and yet that they're still, you know, interested in kind of expanding and continuing that work. So I and I just see that with organizations across the board. So, yeah, so I think that's that's really the opportunity that I see.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Larmour?
Thank you, Council President. Dylan, I wanted, you know, kind of echo some of the sentiment from Councilmember Michelle. Like, I applaud, I've seen you you out at more events, it just seems like there's a lot more active engagement, you know, you're you're meeting new people, introducing the society and the museum to more residents, and I've really felt that this last year. So thank you for that. And I'm really excited and energized by the idea of moving towards the museum model for that house. I think that's going to bring, you know, even more energy and interest and very excited about the changes. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I want to say thank you, Dylan. Thank you so much for all the work you've been doing, like my colleagues mentioned. And I'm looking forward to this strategic plan and all the amazing events you have planned. I mean, last year, yeah, there definitely was a difference in visibility for the museum, your social media, your physical presence at the events, and your smile. So it's really important. I see you, you're always smiling at many events. So thank you, I appreciate you, and thank you to all the board members for being amazing volunteers and serving on this board for many, many, many years, and putting in the work preserving our history and telling stories from our current history that's happening. So I really, really appreciate all of you. I know I was on that board many, many years ago, and I I am a member of the board, if any of my colleagues want to join me in joining and being the member for the board, not the board, for the museum, and hopefully, community is also going to be more engaged and looking forward to what 2024 brings and maybe 2025. And thank you so much for being here and all this amazing work.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to our next presentation, we have Federal Way Link Extension, Mark Maffei.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mark Maffei, engineering supervisor and one of the liaisons for the Federal Way Link Extension. I share that role with Derek Hawkes, who's here on our audience also, and we kind of split that up between 259th Street. So Derek covers everything to the north of 259th, including the KDM Station, and I take care of everything to the south of 259th, including Star Lake. So Derek did the presentation back in July, doing it now for the for the entire Kent portion of it. So eight months has passed and there's been a lot of progress since then, so I have a lot of great pictures and and updates to share with with everybody. So just to reorient everyone and for new members and and the audience, here's the map of the link extension through Kent, starting on the north side at KDM Road and then continuing south. Let's see if there's a pointer here. Here. So there's KDM, continues south behind Lowe's and then up against I-5, continues south to the Star Lake Station here, right up against 272nd, continues south from there into Federal Way. So Kent Des Moines Station, some of the recent progress there, all the utility work is completed, concrete roadway paving is complete on 30th Avenue, 234th, 236th, and 238th. Those are the new roads that are connecting between 30th Avenue and SR99. Track and ballast is complete all the way down to 259th Street. Elevators, escalators, mechanical, electrical, fire suppression systems, and plumbing are all installed in the garage in the station. So this station is really coming along quickly, has substantial completion date set for August of this year, so they're they're pushing hard to get everything done. A lot of the stuff that's happening, you can't see from the pictures, it's all inside, but a lot of progress has been happening. We had some great pictures from our multimedia folks, they took a drone out on a nice sunny day in early March and got some really great pictures, aerial pictures here. So this one's looking north at KDM Station. There's the garage there, obviously, station's right here, here's I-5, and packed highways on the left side of the picture. Another one looking north on the garage, as you can see, it's it's really almost complete. It's got the architectural cladding done on the outside, a lot of landscaping's done around it, it's got the solar panels done up on the roof. Another one there looking to the southwest, there's the bus loop there coming right next to it. And there's one looking to straight west, it's a good picture of 236th here and the bus loop. Running along here, that continues underneath the station area and continues to pack highway and then across that area highlighted there is College Way and extends up to connect with the Highline College. And there's a good one showing it going under the station area there. Another good shot of the of the garage. You can't hear me, Kelly?
Hello.
There's the station, good shot of the close-up of the station looking west. And then there's a street view of the garage looking to the east on 30th Avenue. As you can see, it's really just about done on the outside and and the inside, too, almost. And there's a rendering of the garage, looking really, really how they envisioned it to look, so it's getting much closer to what they envisioned years ago before they started the project. And then some more ground shots from 30th Avenue looking west towards the station. And on the right, there's on the glass, you can see some of the artwork that's done there. I guess that shows up quite a bit better at night when the when the lights are on illuminating behind it. And there's a rendering of the station area, so starting to look look closer to what it's supposed to look like in the finished product. And there's some more of the artwork in the in the glass area on top of the station. This is a picture of 30th Avenue, so a lot of the roadwork is is complete. Like I said, all of all the paving on the roads is done, sidewalks are almost complete, planter strips, as you can see, lighting is in. The picture on the left is looking north towards KDM Road, and the picture on the right is looking south towards, you can see the garage in the background. You can see the guideway there on the right side. They have the electric poles up for the overhead electric system up there. We have the streetlights in on the roadway. There's the plaza area that they're pouring the decorative concrete. This is just north of the or south of the station, and that's time-consuming, they they have to do it in separate panels and to give it an architectural look. So moving forward on KDM Station Area, completing the building finishes, including the metal panel ceilings, ceilings at the station, completing the decorative plaza paving, testing, adjusting, and pre-inspections, other construction activities, completing the roadway restoration on SR99, completing all the roadway restoration throughout the station area, completion of all the site work and landscaping. So now I'm going to talk about Structure C. That is right in this area here, and that's right kind of in the middle of the wetland there, this sorely wetland, this this large green area here. And it it of I-5 and this portion of the guideway spans through that area, and that's got damp and and soft soils, and it's been a big challenge for the for the foundation for them. And it's really been the Achilles' heel for the whole Federal Way Link Extension, pushed them back for at least a year. They had to go back to the drawing board and redesign it and come up with a new plan. So they've done that now, they've gotten all of the substructure work completed, so all the shafts and columns and pier tables are in now, and some great pictures of that. So here's the before and after. On the left side is back from July, and on the right is is now. And so they have these, and 259th is just just behind us here. So they have all the short span girders up, crossing 259th and continuing to the south, and they're working on the larger span girders. So that's kind of where we left off with the last picture right here. So they're continuing along with these longer span girders here, which they do out out of the ground, nothing touches the ground. They have a machine that just continues and pours them and and they connect in the middle. So they're they're on schedule, they're progressing really nicely, there's no other conflicts and and issues, so the construction is moving along well. Structure C is supposed to be completed in November of 2025. There's another picture looking to the north. So Structure C, recent progress, short span girders and deck is poured, drill shafts, columns, and pier tables are completed. And moving forward in the next three to six months, they'll finish the cast-in-place box girders, closure segments, cast-in-place walls, we completed in beginning of the embassy walls for the access road through there. Star Lake Station, recent progress on that, concrete road paving on 26th, 28th, and 272nd are nearly complete, walls on 272nd on the north side are complete, and the south side walls will be completed next month. The garage and station. The garage and station, elevators, mechanical, electrical, fire suppression systems, and plumbing are installed. So again, a lot of the interior work that you can't see to make it serviceable and operational are getting done. And ancillary building is physically complete. So a great shot looking, looking southeast there is the garage, I-5 back here, here's 272nd, 26th, and 28th here, it's all paved out, 272nd is mostly paved, and, yeah, the garage and, and stations are, are far along. So here's one from before, back in July, and there's almost the same angle of the station and garage area, so you can see it's, a lot's happened since then, just on the outside. A lot of the exterior cladding, ornamental cladding on the garage is done, and a lot of the paving on the roads is completed as well, and lots of work done on the inside of the station. Another shot looking to the north. There's a rendering of the station area, and then there's some shots of the station area now. So starting to look, look much closer there. It'll look much better once they get a lot of the paving done, so they, they graded for that. It's getting close to being able to install the bus loops and the walkways and plaza areas. So once those are in, it'll look a lot, a lot more finished and, and completed. Here's the before and after looking south at the stations. On the left is back from July, on the right is now with the, the tracks and ballast in and, and completing work in the station area itself. 272nd, on the left side, we're looking to the west on, looking at the, the north side of the road, and then the picture on the right is looking to the east towards I-5. And a lot of that work is complete now on the north side, the walls are done, sidewalks are in, light pole bases are in, they just need the, the poles and, and trees and whatnot there. Their continuing work on the north side, they had a lot of conflicts with utilities that held them up for a long time. I know a lot of people were frustrated with having the road channelized down and with restrictions, so they're hoping to be able to get past that and get the walls completed here in April, and then probably another six weeks or so after that, they, they will be able to get the sidewalks in and, and hopefully open up the road. So moving forward on the Star Lake area, the plaza, walkways, and bus loop, concrete paving, completion of the building finishes, metal panel ceilings, breezeway artwork, platform level glass curtain wall, and illuminated handrail at the station, site furnishings, including the bus shelters, trash and transformer enclosures, tree grates, site light poles, benches, trash receptacles, ornamental gates. It's all the finishing touches to get done here in the next three to six months. Other activities are complete finishing of the ancillary buildings, ballast and track along the entire segment except for Structure C, which is pushed out a bit. Continuing, continuation of the sidewalk and landscaping along 26th and 28th, and completion of walls and sidewalks on 272nd. So the Star Lake area is supposed to be substantially complete in December. So they're four, five months behind KDM Station. Ongoing permit revisions, that's a lot of the work that Derek and I do on a daily basis as part of the design-build process. There's been over 1,200 so far for the entire project, and about 433 in Kent, and we each revision, there's, there's a multitude of other smaller revisions that, that incorporate one big revision. So Derek and I work on those daily, and they're ongoing throughout the process. There's 126 right now in design waiting to be submitted. So the traffic mitigation projects, those are some of the traffic improvements at various intersections to help mitigate for the additional traffic that will be caused from, from the stations once they open up. Those are at Pack Highway and KDM Road, Military Road and Reef Road, 272nd Street and Star Lake Road, Pack Highway and 272nd. And those projects are, they're kind of separate from the Federal Way Link Extension, and they're bid separately, so they're out to bid now. They'll hope to open here and get awarded soon and get into construction probably this summer sometime. So we'll keep you posted on, on the progress on those projects. So moving forward to project closeout, we have street vacations and dedications, ASBILTS, which is a, a big process that we're going through now, and project closeout process. So the schedule, like I mentioned, KDM Station Garage, substantial completion in August, Star Lake Station and Garage, substantial completion in December '24, completion of Structure C work in November of '25, Sound Transit acceptance of all work, January 2026, and then they'll do testing after that for six months to a year, and hopefully have revenue service available in late '26. So, and then, yeah, we have a sound, another flight, drone flyover that we'll send a link for, for the latest one. That's all I've got. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Looking forward to that completion whenever that all comes together. Hopefully, there's no other issues or any bumps along the road. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Boyce?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just curious, early, early on, we'd be talking about the, the restroom usage and so on, the bathroom in area, the bathrooms in the area. Where are we at with that and what do they look like? Is it a lock combination as you go in, or do you know how we, where we end up with that?
I'm not sure. Kelly? I know better.
Good evening, Kelly Peterson, Deputy Public Works Director, former liaison on the Sound Transit project. Sound Transit, these are, there has been a ton of conversation about the restrooms and how they would operate. There's actually timers and different things. So Sound Transit has been exploring some technologies and different things they, they can do where people can still use the facilities if they need to, but also try to get people to move along to avoid various activities from occurring.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd?
Yes, Mark and Derek, we talked earlier about, about this project, and I'm glad you guys are coming to a completion date. I was there as, I'm one of the residents in the area, first of all, let me tell you that. And I was there at the start of this, and I noticed that you have people out there working during the rain, during the snow, I mean, I mean Saturdays sometimes, sometimes Sundays I see you out there. And I'm, I'm so happy that you guys are finally coming to a end date, you know? Can't wait to see it done, can't wait to see it finished. So would my neighbors, too. Thank you.
And we got a lot of the conflicts out of the way and...
Oh, yes, we had conflicts, too.
...completed, so now they can, they can try to make up for some lost time and...
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I, I have one, Mark. For traffic mitigation projects, what exactly, what is that going to look like, and is the funding coming from our budget?
No, that's, that's funded by Sound Transit, and they're just to mitigate for the traffic impacts due to the stations opening. So they're, they're adding lanes and whatnot at the various intersections to help the capacity that, that they think will be impacted by, by the opening of the stations. Just to touch on the traffic mitigation projects really quickly, the traffic mitigation projects are a part of Federal Way Link Extension. They are under a separate contract from what, the KeyWIT contract. KeyWIT has the big project that you see up there right now. The reason that it is separate is that the state, Washington State Department of Transportation, was still completing their environmental analysis for SR-509 when that project went out, so that was not a part of the package that went out with Sound Transit. After 509 and, and, excuse me, after Washington State Department of Transportation finished their environmental analysis for SR-509, Sound Transit was able to go back in and do, fix their, I don't want to say fix, but update their environmental documents to fully understand and, and to be able to identify what those traffic mitigation plans are. So those are coming, it's part of Federal Link Extension, it's part of the development agreement, it's just going to be a separate contractor.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mark and Derek, and thank you for this presentation. We are looking forward to when this project is complete, and I know community is looking forward to it as well. So that is it. Any other comments? Okay, looks like we are adjourned until 7 o'clock for council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.